I call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the April 7th, 2015 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. Under ceremonies announcement, appointments and presentations, several announcements. April, or the tree giveaway is this Saturday, April 11th. From 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., residents can come down to Camillon Park Boat Launch and receive up to three free trees per household. A list of the trees and shrubs offered is available on the county, on the city's website, county, I don't know where that came from, city's website, www.postfallsidaho.org. Meals on Wheels, the Post Falls Senior Center is in need of delivery drivers for the Meals on Wheels program. Help is needed on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:30 a.m. to about 12 o'clock p.m. If you would like to help ensure that no senior goes hungry, please stop by the senior center and talk with Allison or Millie. The 2015 Veteran of the Year nominations are now being accepted. Forms must be received by Friday, April 17th, 2015, and can be picked up at City Hall or online, again, at www.postfallsidaho.org. Saturday, April 25th, is a residential spring cleanup. Put items at the street by 6:30 a.m. for garbage pickup. All items must be bagged, bundled, or in a garbage toter. Items cannot exceed four feet by four feet. No furniture, tires, concrete, brick, or hazardous materials will be accepted. Appliances picked up by appointment only, and you can call 208-457-1820 for appliance pickup, but no refrigerated appliances will be accepted. Also, on Saturday, the 21st, I'm sorry, the 25th, e-recycling and drug takeback at City Hall from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Drop off your old TVs, computers, cell phones, iPods, and electronic items to be recycled. For a list of accepted items and restrictions, visit the city's website, and I won't repeat it again. We will be handing out free recycled grocery bags, garbage recycling, calendar, energy-saving light bulbs, and toy mini toters. And I see that that said e-recycling and drug takeback, but there is no comments on the drug takeback, so I would assume you can bring the drugs back to the police department at any time and...
You can bring here to City Hall where they have a station in the area.
Thank you.
People can drop them.
Good, so you can bring prescription medication, not used, to City Hall, and it's always accepted, I believe, at the police station, is it not? Thank you. At the April 21st City Council Meeting, the council will consider adoption of an ordinance for a franchise agreement with Avista to provide electric service to customers within the city. To view the proposed ordinance, go to the city's website, www.postfallsidaho.org, and go to the legal notices page. Nomination applications for the 2015 Clay Larkin Mayor's Youth Awards are now being accepted. Forms must be received by Friday, May 8th, 2015, and can be picked up at the City Hall or on the city's website. Next up is oath of office for Deputy City Clerk Phyllis Rosenkrantz, and Shannon is going to administer that oath.
You, Phyllis Rosenkrantz solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Deputy Clerk of the City of Post Falls according to the best of your abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good to see you, Phyllis.
Phyllis and I knew each other probably 50 years ago. Maybe not quite that long. I'm sorry.
Next up, council, I would like to bring forth to you Jason Cornwell as an appointee to the Park and Recreation Commission. Jason applied a year ago and was right up at the top, but we didn't appoint him last time. We have an opening, and I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Jason.
I'd make that motion.
Motion and seconds, further discussion. Clerk, please take your roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, and Jason, thank you for your interest in serving. We have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Whereas April 2015 marks the 47th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969, and whereas equal opportunity for all regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and equal access to housing is an important component of this goal as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment, and housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choices impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies, and ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I, Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, do hereby proclaim April 2015 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Post Falls, dated the 7th day of April 2015. Next up, we have Mary Jensen from Avista to provide us an update on the Post Falls South Channel Dam. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I have a short presentation, I'm gonna show some photos of our recent construction, and then after that, I'm gonna show a two-minute time lapse video. So currently, right now, we've done all the demolition on the dam, and we're starting to build back the concrete that we've removed on the dam. So that's our current schedule that we're in as far as construction with Max J. Cooney Company, they're our contractor on the project. And then, we're going to do the installation of the gate guides and the gates, and as we build all the concrete and finish the dam, we'll be able to put the motors and the hoist and the shiv frame and everything to run the gates on top of the dam, that'll take place sometime April, May, June, we'll be doing that. And then, once we get the gates in and the motors and everything to operate that, we'll test the gates in the dry with the cofferdam still in place. Once the gates are operating, then we'll be able to remove the cofferdam, and we're hoping that in July, we'll remove the cofferdam, and then we'll test those gates when everything's watered up and we have all the head on them. And then, in the summer and fall, we'll do landscaping of Camillon Park and put it all back. As part of the landscaping, we're doing a boat pull-over area, which we're widening the access road into Camillon Park. Two lanes are gonna become four, and so it's gonna allow boaters to go in and undo their equipment and stuff to get their boat ready to launch it, and then the other lane for exiting will allow boaters to kind of button down the hatches as they're leaving. We're also doing landscaping and an overlook down on the South Channel Trail for, it'll be ADA wheelchair access. We'll have a sidewalk down there and a couple paved parking spots, and then we'll bring in vegetation and hydro seed, and hopefully we'll be done by early fall this year. So here's a photo of the crest, we're doing demolition, that's actually an anchor for the rack and pinion hoist system that was embedded in the top of the dam that we're removing, some massive concrete that we demoed. This is the downstream face of the dam, we have our two big excavators, we're using grinding wheels on them, and we're just taking off that one to two feet of concrete and getting down to competent concrete. Here's an up-close view of the grinding wheel, pretty powerful stuff. We first saw cut one to two feet, and that would give us a mark of where to stop the grinding wheel, so it was a pretty impressive project of demolition of the concrete. And this is the final demo of the crest and the downstream base, the tunnel walls, the tunnel floors, we removed all that concrete, about two feet on the downstream spillway and about a foot on the crest itself. We also demoed the upstream base, moved, removed one to two feet. You can see the cofferdam on the right-hand side, and Cooney's crew is actually down in the bottom, preparing the base for the first concrete pour on the upstream face, so that was a pretty exciting day. We finally got all the demolition off of the entire dam, and now we're starting to pour back the concrete. Here's the crew on the downstream face installing dowels and reinforcement, that reinforcement is, makes it able to attach the brand-new concrete to the dam and keep it in place. In this photo, we're actually pouring one of our first pours. We have the base concrete forms and the forms on the pier tails, we also have forms on the tunnel walls, and it's hard to see, but there's actually three concrete trucks, one's way up in the access road, and then we have one on the bridge and one on the cofferdam. So we have our three concrete trucks, and we have a big pumper truck pumping the concrete down in there. And then finally, this is the new concrete on the spillway, you can see the tunnel walls and the pier tails and the base are actually completed, so we're pretty excited about that. And now I'll do the video, I'm not sure how to do the video.
Have you seen the video?
Okay.
It's pretty good. Like a time lapse camera?
So in this video, you'll see five main things. One of the first things you'll see is the construction of the temporary crane pad, which we needed to build the cofferdam, and then you'll see the building of the cofferdam, and after the cofferdam, you'll see us building the bridge and demoing the concrete, and then removing the gates, and then finally, you'll see the last concrete. That's it. You have any questions for me?
Mary, when you read the articles in the paper, construction's behind schedule, and you still anticipate being able to complete it?
Yeah, I know. Whisked deck, lora jala, harapan.
Damn, it's Korean. Yeah, I know. So do we, do you anticipate being able to complete it?
Pabing karwong kene, kita gumang bengene mang. Dwe laki kita anggak. Oh, God.
Good job, Ken.
Completion behind schedule, but still estimated to be completed this summer?
Yeah, we should have everything done, we have between 60 and 70 percent of the concrete completed. Now, we go through the very delicate process of actually installing the gates. The gates are the most time-consuming part of it, however, once we get the actual gate frames in there and the gates embedded in there, we can remove the cofferdam and do the fine tuning of the gates if need be. So definitely will be done this summer.
Are there any significant changes made from the original plans as to what Avista will or will not do and how the city's impacted?
As far as the dam, the only significant change was we had to embed the reinforcement a little bit deeper than we thought of, which is, nobody will even know that. As far as the dam, no, the city won't be impacted at all for that. We are doing landscaping, we're doing a lot more than what the original plans say, so you'll be impacted in a wonderful way, the overlook's bigger, it is wheelchair accessible, the original plans were not, so they're, and we're building a boat pull-over which the original plans never had, so we're actually doing a lot more for the public of Post Falls.
Any other questions? Carrie.
I love what you're going to do with the overlook, we spend a lot of time down there. Is it going to look the same as it did the historic dam on the south-facing or the downstream-facing?
The dam will have, yes, this is just, the downstream will look exactly the same. The upstream will change slightly, the piers will be more bullet-nosed and stick out a little bit further, it's to help deflect the docks that we get, that keep on coming down at our facilities, but yeah, the downstream will be exactly the same. On top of the dam, you will see a shiv frame structure, it's gonna be columns and a big beam that help hoist those now automatic gates up. So you'll see a big frame on top of the dam, but the downstream concrete will be the same, just better.
One of the questions that comes up a lot as we get closer to summer is the timeframe of the boat launch opening and all of that.
Yeah, and every week, we have our weekly meetings, Max J. Cooney and Avista operations personnel, we all have our meetings, and we're very cognizant of when Camillon Park Boat Launch will be opening up. Last I heard, it'd be probably sometime May 15th to June 1st, sometime in that, that frame. Don't quote me on that, but that's what we're working towards, and we're fully prepared to have the roads open and all traffic control and everything to make sure that it's a smooth transition like it was last year. Same thing, traffic control, and we didn't have any problems last year, I think it went really well, so we're all prepared to do that and make sure that the boaters can easily go and use the boat launch area and have a good, good visit to the park.
Well, thank you, I think it's gonna be a huge improvement.
Thank you.
Alan, that was it for you?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mary, thank you, appreciate the update.
Thank you for having me.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict? Would you like to present the consent calendar, please?
Item A is minutes from the March 17th, 2015 meeting. Item B is payables, March 10th through March 30th, 2015. Item C is the Police Department contract for phone system integration with Frontier Communications. Item D is the Jaclyn West Annexation, findings of facts and conclusions. Item E is Greens Ferry Overpass Cooperative Agreement on Bridge Maintenance and Approaches. Item F is Phase 1 Recommended Pre-Selection Con... Should there be contract list or contact list?
Consultant.
Consultant list in the categories of technical, scientific, and wastewater collection treatment and master plan modeling. Item G is contract with Bulldog Contractors for the construction of cemetery shops. Item H is maintenance services agreement with Avista for area known as Trailer Park Wave Day Use Area. Item I is improvement waiver request, 308 East 13th Avenue. Item J is improvement waiver request, 402 East 5th Avenue, and item K is frontage improvement waiver request, 2469 North Spokane Street.
Any questions? I have one. Mr. Cafferty. Periodically, we get the improvement waiver requests, and it makes sense because there may be one piece of property and adjacent properties or properties in the area do not have those improvements made. If we waive, actually approve the waivers, and I believe I've asked this question before, and then down the road, improvements need to be made, if in fact an LID was assessed, could those property owners, would they partake in that LID, or would they be excluded from it?
It would depend on the makeup of the LID, but by the, by granting the waiver at this time, I don't think that precludes them being involved in an LID at a future date, should that arise.
Okay. My point is, I'm all for not making them do it now, but if we do make the improvements down the road, I would like property owners, whoever maybe.
It would still be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, too.
Alan, go ahead.
On item H, can somebody tell me a little bit more about Trailer Park Wave Day Use Area?
Dave Farrar could present on that.
Sort of seeing the picture in the packet, I don't know anything about this.
I've seen it down Boise, it's great.
As part of the relicensing process for Avista, for the Post Falls Dam, one of the requirements in there was to have access to the river to provide for kayakers and canoeers. As they work through the process, and this was in addition to what we have at Falls Park, and they end up buying land, and I'm not sure that, is that breezy way? But anyhow, it's an area that the kayakers called Trailer Park Wave. So in the last year, they completed their purchase and they had the access point designed, they put in a parking lot, they put in access to the, down to the river, and then when it was all done, they were looking for somebody to do the general maintenance. They'd approached the county, but the county was kind of out of their way from us, it's fairly close to Corbin Park, so it wasn't a big issue, so we've, what you see before you is that agreement to do the restroom cleaning, the pickup of the trash, general maintenance and repair, so.
So the property's still Avista's?
It's Avista's, yes.
It's not like a city park?
No, and it's not a lease like we have for Camillon Park or Falls Park, it's a separate piece, but it was a condition of the relicensing.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one more question, but not for Dave. On item K, the frontage improvement waiver request, now on that one, we're asking the applicant to pay us, is that right?
Yes, there's a bond that they will pay upfront, so when those improvements are made, then that money will apply towards those improvements. Bill Melvin can speak to...
I was just curious how that was, I noticed that the request was more from a hardship standpoint, but how is that different than the other two items?
Mayor, council, it's really a timing of improvements, we're doing the design for that section of the roadway right now in-house. Jim Mulcahy, one of our engineers, is working on that. Then we'll be seeking some internal funding to do those improvements, so it's just really a timing issue relative to that. If there weren't any plans in the near future to do that, we probably would have made a different recommendation, and just as we're looking at trying to move forward, within the next couple of years with those improvements, the thought was, let's go ahead and get those dollars and then they'll cash out and get those improvements constructed with the rest of those items, so.
Great.
It was just a timing issue.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Shannon, please take the roll.
We need a motion first.
We have to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Can I make a motion?
I was thinking we did. We have a motion in a second after my, whoops. Now, would you please take the roll?
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next, public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. In order to ensure adequate public notice, Idaho law provides that any items requiring council action must be placed on the agenda of an upcoming council meeting. Persons wishing to speak will have five minutes. Comments regarding performance by city employees are inappropriate at this time and should be directed to the mayor. So with that, anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Name for the record, please. Come forward, name, name for the record.
Suzanne Spencer, but I'm just moral support. It's okay.
Hello, I'm Stacy Mann, and I'm here to talk about problems I'm having with getting a permit for a nursery.
Stacy, I'm gonna, I've gotta interject real quick, I'm gonna let you speak.
Okay.
But I've visited with legal counsel, this is an item, this isn't the appropriate venue for that, this is a code enforcement issue, and there's been litigation that has been threatened, and as a result, this isn't the appropriate venue, but I'm, we're gonna listen to you speak.
Okay.
But we're not gonna entertain additional comments on this item until it goes through the proper channels, and there was one other point we wanted to make, oh, and council's, council will not be making comments on this either just because of the fact that it is a code enforcement issue and there's potential litigation, but we do wanna listen to you speak, so we're gonna give you five minutes.
Okay. I have had problem after problem with the planning and zoning department, and I have given them everything that they've asked for, this is just a portion of the stuff that they've requested, and I've given it to them, and I seem to not be able to get the permits I need. I'm sorry, I was trying to not cry, but this is really emotional for me 'cause I'm trying to make a business, and... Will you step in, please?
Go ahead, stop that for a minute, Shannon.
I'm just here as moral support, I just, I only know Stacy through purchasing something, and I asked questions about why there's an ongoing issue, I would love to see her greenhouse built. I actually did, I came to planning and zoning today just to ask some additional questions, which, I'm not a part of her situation, so they couldn't answer those questions for me, but what I did notice is the change in tone when I said what I was there regarding, and once that happened, my suggestion to Stacy was maybe the one person that she seems to have bad interaction with, that she might suggest that that person on, in that capacity might remove himself so she can maybe have more direction directly with the new head of that department. My suggestion to her was that she talk to Russ directly and maybe not speak to Justin anymore, 'cause it seems as though she and Justin, they've had so much interjection, or so much interaction, they truly seem to be butting heads now. So I guess I just wanna make that recommendation that I said to her, that maybe she, going forward, could have discussions just strictly with Russ.
Excuse me real quick, and you said name?
Yeah.
Suzanne, Suzanne Spencer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She did give her nick. Go ahead.
Sorry.
You're right. Stacy, back to you.
Some of the things that I'd like to bring up is, when I started with this project, I have letters here from people in that department spelling out how it was gonna be, and it has changed. Every week, there's, they change the rules, and it's like impossible to get them to understand what I'm trying to do. They say they're trying to help me, but they are not, I will guarantee, they are not on my side. I need somebody, as a liaison, to help me to get past that group of people that seem to have it out for me. You guys might not know that, but I'm telling you, I have people here who are all here on my behalf.
Not appropriate.
That I've seen what's been going on, and I'm at my wit's ends.
Russ, would you be willing to step in, I know you probably are up to speed, but would you be willing to step in, and again, we received a phone call where there's been litigation mentioned, so that's an issue for legal counsel, but would you step in, work with staff, work directly with Stacy to try to see what the issues are, make sure that everything is understood, 'cause I've got a whole packet of information, too, and so I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but if you could get involved in that, even more so than you have been, I would appreciate it.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. I just need somebody who can think outside the box.